While we wait, let's learn more about Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on Channel 13 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
I'm going to start the meeting of the Town of Exeter zoning board for Tuesday, August 16, 2022. We have five members present. We have Martha Pennel, alternate at the end, Duanne Petito, another alternate, Laura Davies, my right, Rick Fieldbar, and I'm Esther Olson Murphy, the clerk. Our chair and vice chair are not available tonight, so you get me. So I want to start by announcing that two applications have requested continuances. The application for 131 Portsmouth Ave, LLC has requested a continuance until September 18th, and the application for Riverwoods has requested a continuance until October 20th, 2022, so we will not be hearing those tonight. We're going to start with a request for, where is that? From Jones and Wilson for ZBA case 18-14, a request for extension for 173 to 179 Water Street. That's tax map parcel 64-50. Does anybody hear from that that wants to speak?
Good evening. My name is Steve Wilson. Relative to our, I live in Kensington, I own a few properties in town. Kevin Jones and I bought the Friedman property at the old Woolworths building last, the end of last September, and you may or may not know the previous applicant, while Bert owned it, had come in for a variance to have residential use on the first floor, which is actually above grade in the back. They were also considering tearing down, you know, 2/3 of the building to build a new three-story apartment building over parking. Kevin and I have a less aggressive plan for the building, which is to not tear any of the building down, to take what's existing, potentially put a shaped roof on top of its subject to the, to the other boards in town, and we'd like to preserve the residential use potential for one more year, in which time we should be able to get the project underway. So that's basically what we're looking for, an extension of that previously approved decision.
Then do you have any questions?
So the proposal will change, but you'd like to continue to preserve the use variance that was granted?
Correct. We're still going to do residential use towards the rear. The building is 180 feet deep, so the application of retail at that level like it was in the grand old scheme of things Woolworths is really not available right now. So we're turning the front 60 by 80, two stories, into continuing to use that as a retail and office environment, and most of that is leased right now. So now that we've leased that, from that point back with the rear and alley entrance, we would turn the other 9,600 square feet into five or six apartments, and the, you know, previously you had approved it, and there were 17 apartments, and that was, would require tearing down the existing building. So we had a nice facade approved at the HTC, a new facade plan, and they approved that, and we're going to build the units within the existing envelope of the building.
So when you're ready with your new plan, will you come back, or are you just looking to preserve?
Just looking to preserve that. We need to go to the planning board again just to be able to pull, the project was so grand before, and now even to make it simpler, we still have to go back for a minor site plan approval.
Doug, they don't need to come back to us for any reason?
No. This was strictly for, the variance was granted for, the variance was granted for the first floor residential use. So even if they wanted to continue their plan to go up, they could without anything from us, but.
Except the extension.
And nothing, none of the regulations have changed that would prevent it, and parking and all that stuff was all set, so.
So this gives them one more year?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe so. Yes.
I'm happy.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I'm good.
Do we motion?
Yeah, we need to motion.
Okay. Who's going to motion?
Do we want to request if there's any public comment? Or do we not do that for extension?
I don't think we did that for extension.
Forgotten. Sorry. Okay. Yeah. I make a motion to approve the request for a one-year extension for ZBA case 18-14 for the relief granted to 173 through 179 Water Street, tax map parcel number 64-50.
One second.
Boo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And aye.
Thank you very much.
Good. Now we're going to move on to new business. The first one is the application from Benham Investments for variance from Article 5, Section 5.5.3 to permit proposed construction of two principal residential buildings on a 7.32 acre parcel located at 28 Newfield Road. The subject property is located in the RU rural zoning district, tax map parcel 38-3, ZBA case 22-13.
Good evening. Jerry Hamel, 17 Little Pine. Basically, this piece of land that we have is on the corner, it's located on the corner of Route 85 and 101 in Exeter. We actually came here in 2017, and we did get this variance back then to build two principal dwellings on the one lot. It's an RU area. Basically, with the economy, the way it's been going the last five years, we really never got a chance to do anything with the property, so our variance ran out, so we're back, you know, to see if we can reissue so that we can go ahead and build a house there.
Did you want to go through your application, or is it?
Well, I'm having a little bit of trouble. You've got seven acres.
Yes.
And 200 feet.
Well, basically with the property, it was, we have, we've been here a number of times, we've owned it for a few, quite a few years.
I've been here.
We did come back, we had, we did have a, get a variance to do a three unit at one time, but decided that the impact was too big for the land, so that's why we decided to go with the two.
Okay.
Then with the two, then we were going to pork chop, and then unfortunately, the town doesn't allow that anymore. So we came, you know, knowing we could have three, or we could have one, we really only wanted two, so we came back to see if we could get the two principles on the one parcel. And like I said, that was granted back in March of 2017. We did come back for the extension a couple of years ago, and COVID hit, so everything kind of like fell apart, and then the boom, you know, started going again, and our one year actually ran out, so that's why we started with signing the process all over with the, with the new plan, same plan, just different timing, and hopefully we can get it done this time.
Let me try again. You've got seven plus acres.
7.23 acres.
And more than 200 feet of frontage.
Right. We've got 225 feet of frontage, I believe it is.
So for a house, all you need is 100 feet?
No, it's a 200, it's an RU zone. It's a rural zone, so you need 200 feet, and you need two acres of land.
Oh, is that right?
That's correct. That is correct. So when we, when we originally did the pork chop, which that actually did get approved, the only problem we had there, we had to, we had to do it right away going in, which ate up all kinds of land to give us all the frontage. So when the town, I think it was a year after the town decided not to do that anymore, that's when we came back for the Article 5, Section 5.5.3.
So could they, if they could get the energy together, could they put three units on that property the way it was approved before?
I don't remember, I don't remember the circumstances for three, but I mean, they still would need some, some relief because the, because of the lack of frontage and not being able to create frontage on the right of way, which Planning Department had taken that ability to create frontage on the right of way away from this project and other projects, so. So I guess my quick answer would be no, we couldn't do three units there.
Well, we actually were, we couldn't do a three law, we could only do a three condos, so these would be both considered as condos still. When we came, when we came, originally that's what we went for, is for the three condo units, and we had all our density requirements and everything needed. It was going to be a small-scale multifamily, I think it was called.
Correct.
And so that's what we were going for, small-scale multifamily. But by the time you put in, they wanted to have a, they wanted, there was so much engineering we did, and there was so much impact to the land, we felt that the impact was far greater than we wanted to do to the land. So this is why we went with the second option, which minimized our impact.
Yeah.
So they would have a shared drive to the north end of the frontage?
It'd be a shared drive coming in, splitting off to the two.
And the ownership would be condominium, so they would own the land?
It would still be, still be, still be as condos.
The land would be common? The land would be owned in common?
Yes, it would be.
Okay.
We would have a limited use on the backs of both, there would be a limited use for both of the parcels.
Do we have anything else?
I'm done with my questioning.
Okay. Is there any public comment? Does that appear so? Yeah, so I was going to. Oh, sorry. You got your notes. I got, we're going to close public session so we can discuss. I guess, knowing that it's condoed, that was my big question, was have you have two primary dwellings on one lot, but if they're condos? Yep. That's a different, I understand it to be slightly different, so I don't have a whole issue with that.
I mean, even though, despite the size of the lot, between the wetlands and the proximity to the highway exit and the length or the depth of the lot, I think.
There's not a lot of usable, accessible.
It is challenging, and I think the, you know, even though the two houses are, or the detached condo units are proposed to be close together at the frontage, it seems like it would be fairly low impact, given the size of the lot, so I'm okay with it.
It's an odd shape. A piece of land requires some type of accommodation, I think.
Does anybody feel we should go through the variance criteria, or is it?
I think we should.
I think we should.
I mean, especially since, I mean, a lot of us also weren't here, or I don't know other people were here for the original application, so I don't know if.
Well, Laura signed it, so.
Okay. I was here.
Yeah. We might just want to have something on the front. It's not really articulated in this application.
Do you want me to go through the variance criteria? Okay. So the variance is not contrary to the public interest, the spirit of the ordinance is observed. So these two are usually considered together, the proposed use must not conflict with the explicit or implicit purpose of the ordinance, must not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, threaten public health, safety, or welfare, or otherwise injure public rights. So I do not think that it will be contrary to the public interest. I don't think it will alter the character of the neighborhood, it's in a rural area. I think it would be nice to see a couple houses on this property. I don't see any way that it would threaten the public health, safety, or welfare. This is well-inseptic out here? Is it well-inseptic?
Yes.
Yes. So I don't think there's any reason to be concerned about the spirit of the ordinance or the public interest. Substantial justice is done, the benefit to the applicant should not be outweighed by the harm to the general public or other individuals. I don't know that there is a harm to the general public or other individuals, I don't see it.
Nope.
And then was mentioned in our deliberations, the values of surrounding properties are not diminished. There's extensive open land behind, on the back of this property, so they won't have any impact to anybody there to diminish their property values. The other butter on one side is Route 101, so I'm not worried about that side, and I don't think that there's any, any negative property value diminishment for the properties on the other two sides. It's a fairly low-impact proposal. So literal enforcement of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. Unnecessary hardship means because of special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, there is no, no fair and substantial relationship between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property, and the proposed use is a reasonable one. So I think we discussed that the hardship here would be the shape and site conditions with wetlands and so forth, and the configuration of the lot with minimal frontage. It's kind of a shame not to allow a little bit of development on it, given its size, but it's a little bit tricky to do it. So that, to me, is the hardship, and the proposed use of two, a two-unit condo is a reasonable use for this district and neighborhood. So I could read more, but I feel like we've covered the criteria, and there's no real issues with it, so.
I agree.
Okay. Does anybody have a motion?
I can move.
Okay. Let's hear it.
I'm going to try anyhow. I move that we approve the request from Benham Investments for variance to Article 5, Section 5.5.3 to permit proposed construction of two principal residence buildings on a 7.23 acre parcel located at 28 Newfield Road.
I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 You're approved.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Who is that other one that ducked? So these two guys ducked?
Yeah.
So he's still here?
Yep.
Thank you.
The last case of nights is the application from Phillips Exeter Academy for variance from Article 4, Section 4.2, Schedule 1. That's the old one. They're not here. Sorry.
Sorry, my mistake.
We'll start that again, so there's no confusion. How's that?
I'm good.
Because I love reading out loud. The application from Phillips Exeter Academy for a variance from Article 4, Section 4.2, Schedule 1, permitted uses for proposed change in use to permit faculty multifamily housing to occupy an existing structure at 81 High Street. The subject property is located in the R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District, tax map parcel 71-97, ZBA case 22-14. Feel free to present.
Thank you. My name's Roy Tillsley, I'm from Bernstein, Shore, Sawyer, and Nelson, on behalf of Phillips Exeter Academy. I'm joined by Mark Layton, the Director of Facilities Management, Steve Wilson makes a command appearance as a representative of the property, current property owner, 81 High Street, LLC. The property is not surprisingly at 81 High Street, tax map 71 Lot 97. It is a two-acre lot with two buildings, the main building being over 12,000 square feet, a former nursing home. It is in the R2 Single Family Residential Zone. Pursuant to a variance granted by this board in 2011, the property currently consists of multifamily housing with 14 age-restricted 55-plus apartment units. There are 13 two-bedroom units, 1-1 bedroom units. There are, I believe, 12 units in the main building and two units in a separate building on the property. The prior use, as I mentioned, was a nursing home, which existed on this site for many years as a pre-existing non-conforming use. My client, Phillips Exeter, is seeking to acquire the property and to use a portion of the apartments for its faculty housing needs. As such, we are seeking this additional variance to permit faculty multifamily housing that will be in addition to the current allowed multifamily use of 55 and over housing. We view essentially, once the academy acquires the property, that will have a mixture of faculty housing and, again, 55-plus as allowed by this board. My sense, over the last 10 years, from what I can see and what I hear, is that this multifamily project has existed relatively peacefully in the neighborhood. The abutting properties on each side are both multifamily properties as well, currently condominiums. Mr. Wilson, as best I can tell, has done a fabulous job restoring the property. It really is a very well-done piece of property. It's difficult to use the property in compliance with the zoning ordinance, this is not a structure at 12,000 square feet that is easily used for a single-family residential purposes. We believe that adding faculty housing to the already allowed multifamily 55-plus use assures that the property continues to be used in a low-impact way as multifamily housing. Faculty housing is typically singles and couples. We get two bedrooms, so the most you might see is a couple with a child in there. It's also, I think, important to note that we are not proposing really any changes in the property whatsoever, other than the tenant mix. I think you have from us the 2011 plan that was approved by this board and the planning board. We are not proposing any physical changes to the property whatsoever. Again, it's just a change in the tenant mix. In terms of the zoning criteria, I'll cover the public interest and consistent with the spirit of the ordinance together, since they are intertwined. The proposal does not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. This property is already multifamily housing, it will stay multifamily housing, and there is multifamily housing throughout the neighborhood, particularly on each side of this property. The variance will not threaten the public health, safety, and welfare. There'll be no practical change in the use of the property. The variance will not change or increase the intensity of use in a way that would affect public health, safety, or welfare. Criteria three, substantial justice. As this board knows, this involves weighing the loss to the applicant by denying the variance against the gain to the public by strict enforcement of the ordinance. If the gain to the public does not outweigh the loss to the applicant, then there is not substantial justice. There is substantial justice, sorry. Again, we already have multifamily apartments here, the gain to the general public by strict enforcement of the ordinance is relatively small. Again, we're only looking to change the tenant mix, and this will still be multifamily housing even if this variance is denied. The loss to the applicant is significant. My client will be unable to use the property for its faculty housing purposes if this variance is denied. Phillips Exeter has a legitimate need for faculty housing, and this project allows the academy to address that need in an incremental way, using some of the existing housing stock without any new construction that is specifically dedicated to faculty housing. Again, we Again, we envision a mixture of faculty housing and the existing allowed 55-plus use on this particular project. We'll probably start out with two or three faculty housing units, uh, over the course of the next year or so. Uh, as tenants leave, five years now, it might be 50%. We, again, envision kind of a mixed approach here, not just a solid conversion to faculty housing. Uh, the proposed variance is appropriate for the area inconsistent with the property's current use. Criteria four, the value of surrounding properties will not be diminished, again, from the perspective of a neighboring property. There's no real change in the usage of the property by expanding the tenant mix to include faculty housing. Still multifamily housing, still 14 units, still the same footprint, the same buildings. Uh, nothing really changes, again, other than the tenant mix. Finally, unnecessary hardship. Uh, this board has already found in 2011 that the property is subject to unnecessary hardship in granting the variance for the age-restricted multifamily housing. And again, even though we're 10 years later, I, I think the unnecessary hardship analysis starts in the same place. You've got to look at that 12,000-square-foot beautiful building on the property, um, and ask what you can do with that that complies with the zoning ordinance. And it is not a building, as a former nursing home, that easily fits single-family residential housing. So, the special condition of the property is the historic buildings on the property, its prior use, the size of those buildings, and trying to use those in an appropriate fashion. Um, currently, the main building is 12 apartments. It's not compatible with single-family residential. I don't think anyone wants to see a historic, beautiful building like this demolished to put a single-family house up. Um, the use of the building for multifamily housing has been successful and is the most appropriate use of the property, given its layout, existing structures in history. Uh, owing to these special conditions, the property cannot be used in strict conformance with the ordinance, and a variance is necessary to allow a reasonable use of the property. You've already found that in granting the variance for 55-plus multifamily housing. Expanding the tenant mix in this property to include academy faculty in addition to 55-plus ensures that the multifamily use of the property continues to have an appropriate impact on the neighborhood and is not overused or does not become a burden on the community. It allows the property to remain viable in its historic and renovated condition. Finally, the proposed use is reasonable. Multifamily has existed on-site for 10-plus years with no issues. Uh, expanding the users to include academy faculty is a reasonable request, given the unnecessary hardship in the inability to conform with single-family residential, given the historic buildings on the property. Happy at this point to take any questions, address any concerns that the board has regarding this variance request.
Can I go?
Sure.
You want to go?
Okay. Go for it.
Um, can I ask what the occupancy history has been since the conversion to apartment units?
Uh, yeah, it's been very good. Um, and if you want a rounder answer to the question, you know, we've had a good, good mix of tenants there. It's within state law that we have to, uh, allow appropriate, um, under 55, you know, for, in order not to practice age discrimination, but it's been well-settled with, with working people just over 55 or one person, 55 to 60. And I'll just say the circumstances now, first of all, the rental nature of the property. So, we were able to sustain low costs and low rent, relatively speaking, for the 10 years because of low interest rates that we're the beneficiary of. And with the, and I'll just quote, you know, first of all, the water and sewer and, and common utilities and the, uh, now the rise in interest rates, you know, really, the only option to maintain the property as nice as it is, and I hope you've seen it, but would be to condominiumize it in some form. So, a lot of the people who live there and have lived there for some time, maybe there's six or seven people who will age out there probably, and there have been others in the past, um, I need to raise the rent significantly because my interest rates have gone from three-point-something to six-point-something like in October. So, that provides, I think this is a good resolution because the academy can do the maintenance and the other things to them through their program at the academy for much lower costs than we can, and they don't need to pay the kind of interest rates that a guy like me, although I have good credit, you know, that's the market for mortgages right now. So, I really think that, um, granting the variance to just waive the 55 and older requirement would be helpful because it would maintain rentals for this market. So, the people who live there would still have to be over 55 unless they were faculty of the academy. So, um, I've spoken to the people in the property about it, and, you know, they're not able to spend the kind of money buying a place that a lot of people can that are coming into town and stuff. So, the rental history has been very good. You know, we've been good landlords, and we haven't been raising the rent. If we raised it 2% over a two-year period in the last 10 years, that would have been all on average, but I just can't sustain that right now in the face of the rising costs. So, thank you very much. If you have any other questions, I'm happy.
You done?
Um...
Sure, I have a turn?
I guess I'd like a better understanding of what the hardship is here because the property had a hardship when we granted the variance back then to multifamily, but, um, that's now what the use is. So, there's no more hardship because it's not going to be, um, single-family homes anymore. That's not the only option. It's now permitted to be multifamily. So, I don't understand the hardship to take rental housing off of the market for the general public in a time when we have a 1% vacancy rate and there's nowhere for people to go and make it less available for the general public and more available for the academy, which has abundant resources.
Well, I, I think legally, the unnecessary hardship analysis looks at what can be done with the property under the zoning ordinance. So, I still think that the unnecessary hardship that you found in 2011 continues to exist because this is not a property that's ever going to be a single-family residential property, without tearing the building down.
Totally agree. I actually appraised it back before it became multifamily housing.
So, you know, I, I, uh, the historic buildings on the property and their size and their scope, that's the unnecessary hardship. And the question then becomes, okay, we have an unnecessary hardship. Is it reasonable to expand the class of users who can use the property? We think allowing, if the academy acquires it, academy faculty to use the property, which the, you know, the academy has a need to house these faculty in the community, they'll be housed here someplace, you know, whether they buy this project or not, um, is an appropriate use, it's a reasonable use. And again, the goal is not, you know, this is not something that's going to convert over the day after closing. You know, the eviction notices are not going out. We, we anticipate that likely what will happen, and our goal is to really have the project sort of changed through attrition. So, as, as, as tenants age out, move out, you know, then we will likely have some faculty people to come in. We envision two or three people in the first year. Steve tells us there's two or three people who are likely not going to renew their leases. So, we think we can do this without taking the existing people and throwing them out. Again, we, we envision it maybe at a 50-50 ratio in five years. Part of what works for the academy here is, you know, this gives them the ability to meet their needs in the long term, um, but they can continue to provide the rental housing that's provided here to the community when they don't need it, as opposed to, you know, building, and I know I was here a few months ago about building a dedicated faculty-type village. You know, that becomes something a little bit different, I think. So, I mean, at the end of the day, these are people that will be in this community somehow. We think we can do this in an appropriate fashion, uh, do it by attrition so that we're not, again, you know, the eviction notices are not going out the day after the closing, so...
Would the academy entertain a condition to maximum, to a maximum number of units for faculty?
Um, I'd have to ask Mark that. I guess if that was something that was subject to the academy's ability to come back in the future and look to expand it, I would leave it to Mark, but that would be my concern.
Hi. Good evening. Mark Layton, Director of Facilities. Um, I mean, I think we'd be open to that. You know, I think part of it is that it's really, really hard for us to project exactly what we need for housing. So, we know now we have a near-term, a near-term need of around five to seven housing units over the next three to five years. But, uh, so after that, as far as our program changes, I think that that's what we would be hesitant about saying there's a certain number. Um, but, I mean, we'd be open to that as far as making this project go, or allowing this project to go forward. Just, I want to add to what Roy was talking about. I mean, currently, right now, and to your, your comment about taking rental units off or making them available for others, we're renting four houses right now because we have the need and we have a major need. So, I mean, we've already starting to do that just because we have that, and so we don't have a huge amount of land that we can continue to build that we want to do that. So, um, so this opportunity came up. It's a great property, great condition. The 15 units are more than we need right now, but we'd still like to keep that open as far as how the campus grows towards the future. Um, but, um, so hopefully, I answered your question, but just to give you the background.
I, I have a question about the hardship, um, issue. And I, I just want a better understanding of whose hardship we're considering because I understand in the application says, well, if PEA doesn't get this variance, they can't use the building, but they don't own the building right now. The building's owned by someone else, correct? So, and that, so should we be looking at the hardship to the current owner?
What, what?
Or to the prospective buyer of the...
They're, they're doing on the basis of a contingent of sale.
Okay.
So, they need the, they need the variance...
In order to close the...
In order to close the deal.
Hardship isn't related to the owner. It's related to the property. It's a hardship to the property. That's what it says here.
I think in the application, you know, where I, where I've made the point that, I think it was on the substantial justice prong, that I made the point that the academy will lose the ability to use this for faculty housing, and it has a need for faculty housing. And as we now know, those people are already in the community renting properties. Um, that was the substantial justice prong, not the hardship prong. I agree. Hardship has to do with the property.
Okay.
In this case, I, you know, the hardship is, the question is, can you use the property in strict conformance with the ordinance? And if the answer is no, and it's due to a special condition, you have hardship. And I think here, the special condition is you've got a beautiful 12,000-square-foot building that ought to stay in town, that's been beautifully restored. You don't want to tear it down to put a single-family house. That's still there. And then the question becomes, is it reasonable to expand the tenant, you know, the tenant restriction? That's really all it is, so...
Can I have a turn?
You, good boy, Rick. You can have a turn.
I'm, I'm trying to be polite over here.
You're doing well.
So, presumably, if all the faculty who wanted to stay in this facility were over 55, you wouldn't be standing there.
Presumably, sure. If, if that was something that we had under control and could say that, then we wouldn't need to do this.
Right.
Right.
Okay. So, basically, what I'm concerned about is if we pass this variance, all restrictions are gone. You talked about, well, usually they're just two people, maybe you'll have a kid. A two-bedroom apartment can easily hold a couple and two kids. Would you be willing to consider a restriction on the number of, of inhabitants? Is that a word?
I don't know if we do that.
Why not? You can do whatever...
We cannot do whatever we want, Rick.
We control, when we approve housing, it's not, um, it's, it's the number of bedrooms and number of parking spaces and that stuff. We don't have control over the number of occupants, I don't think.
There could be...
I don't know.
I don't know if there are restrictions regarding, um, complaints for discrimination against families. You know, I don't know if you're trying to restrict the number of occupants per unit or per, or in the building. If you could base a complaint at some point regarding that, I, I don't, and I don't know if that's an issue here in Hampshire. I've seen it in other places. Just for thought.
Yeah.
I don't know what the implications would be.
Exactly who lives there in terms of what the family's made up of. I think we could do, the 55-plus, we can clearly do, but I don't think we could do, go much further than that.
Well, I don't, if we can do 55-plus, why can't we do 35-plus or 25-plus?
The definition of 55 and older.
Yeah, there's a, there's a legal definition that you can have, without having age discrimination, you can have a 55-plus and older community if you meet certain criteria, which is what Steve has been doing for the last 10 years. But I think from an age discrimination perspective, to, to take a different number and put it in there would likely run afoul of federal law.
You can't arbitrarily pick a number of...
Yeah.
If you're over 35, you're good. You don't, that's not how it works.
But, but, and it's not, we're not asking you to just blow away the classes and open this up to all multifamily. Part of, I think, the approach here by having, you know, academy faculty, um, is, you know, that's a, a class of, of people that don't tend to have larger families. I mean, the academy, you know, it's pretty rare that you've got a husband and wife, two kids, living on campus or living at the academy. Can it happen? Sure, it can happen. Um, but the academy also has the resources, if that happens, to put them in more appropriate housing than the two-bedroom unit. Um, you know, so that's part of it.
Well, I...
You know, you can still have it now, as, as Steve said, you know, he has to have a quarter available to anyone to comply with the law. You know, people who are 55 can have children and still be in there. So, it's not as if, you know, children, it couldn't happen. And I, and I think that's part of the point. I don't think it really changes much.
Okay.
It introduces a group of people who, again, are not going to be heavy, heavy users on the property, I think probably because that's the nature, probably because the academy has the resources to put people in appropriate assignments, and if they need bigger than two bedrooms, they can do that.
Well, I, I hear you.
Yeah.
I'm sitting here as a father of three grandchildren who lived, uh, lived on, uh, campus housing at the other Phillips Academy. And it was close, and there were, and there were five of them. I, I'm willing to yield that we can't do it on age, but I think we need to go back to, if we limit the number that can be...
Like 25% have to be not faculty, something like that?
Or a much bigger number.
I guess my question, too, is in 15 years, if the academy sells, now anybody can live there because it's not faculty housing because the academy...
I, I view that as the opposite. I mean, if something happens, I mean, obviously, the academy's been here a long time, probably that's not the case, but if something happens and the academy's not here and it's not replaced by another academy that needs faculty housing, then you're back to 55-plus.
So, we can have a motion where it has to be faculty or...
Yeah, that's the, I mean, the request is faculty housing, and that's for that specific reason.
So, I think one of the reasons that the 55-plus legal classification was created was because, um, they wanted to create an opportunity for people that are a little bit older to live in a community that is designed for them and comfortable for them. And so, um, people that don't want to live in, in a non-age-restricted community, go to those places because they don't, I mean, I hate to say it, but I don't think they want to be around children. Maybe they want a quieter environment. I don't know. But I think that is the thought process behind creating a distinction like that. It's for people who are approaching retirement. And I'm just not sure that, um, my little exposure to faculty housing was that there was a lot of students visiting, there was a lot of young people around, a lot of, um, it's just a very different atmosphere. And so, the existing tenants will be experiencing a change in their atmosphere. And I just, so that, you know, that, whether that's acceptable to them, they're tenants and they can choose to go if they want to. But the, my greater concern is the acute, acute need for rental housing and that we're going to be taking more units off the market for the general public and making it more restrictive.
You know, again, I, I think as Steve said, these people are already renting...
And I hear that.
You know, so, so at some level, it's a... You know, so, so at some level, it's a reshuffle in this initiative.
But, I think the Academy will solve their problem somehow, and I'm not really worried that it won't happen somehow. I just worry, I do worry that we're losing more rental housing in a nice, you know, a successful, good place, not a crappy old place that doesn't work well for people.
Sure, no, I, I get it. We understand it. I mean, we heard from the current owner about possible condominiumizing it, and that would change things a bit.
And we can't control that.
No, I know, I know that.
We have control of it.
You know, this will at least keep, you know, rental housing as part of the project. You know, you've heard Mark say that the restriction would be okay. I think the only qualification I would add would be that, you know, if I come back here in five years and ask to remove the restriction, I don't want someone saying, well, you agreed to this five years ago. I mean, right now, the Academy doesn't need the whole thing and the restriction in place now is subject to the Academy coming back and asking to have it removed in the future. Obviously, that's this board's decision when and if that happens. I think that would be a reasonable way to address that. Sure, that chunk of this property stays in the rental.
Whatever future applications, the board will have prerogative to say that if they want to.
Right, right.
At that point in time.
Right, right.
So, I, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying, but there's no assurance that that would be the case, that we would, or whoever's here would choose to.
Understood. I just, what I just, what I wanted, what I'd like to be clear about is that the Academy has the right to make the request. So, it's not one of those things where.
Oh, sure.
You told me 10 years ago, you weren't going to do this, and here you are now. As long as we can make the request, obviously, we've got to convince this board, whoever's sitting here, and whether it's five years, 10 years, 20 years, that the request makes sense. And who knows, you know, the housing market's going to change, a lot of things could change.
Sure.
So, you know, as long as it's considered on its merits, we're happy to agree at this point to a restriction that addresses some of those concerns.
I just want to add, it might be helpful, just because you had mentioned this about who would be using this property. And so, we don't allow students, or students don't end up going to the faculty housing. That's, that was what it was maybe 10 or 15 years ago. That's not the case anymore.
It's been a while for me, so.
Yeah, but that's okay. I mean, I just want to explain, you know, what, what we're intending to use this. So, we would respect that it's a two-bedroom or one-bedroom apartments. We wouldn't be trying to pack people in there. We do have a lot of other apartments that, and part of the process is finding the right fit. What we believe this will be used for is potentially what we refer to as post-dorm, where we would have somebody that has done their dorm commitment, that they would, they live in a dorm for at least 10 years, up to 15, and they qualify for post-dorm. So, that this would be an attractive option for them to move to.
Okay.
We have other houses, like the property at High Street that we're building now, that's intended to be post-dorm also. But, after they live there for a certain amount of time, and some of our faculty want to downsize, so, and they can extend their housing. So, they would downsize, and that's how we would, we envision this property to be used. So, we do think that it's probably going to be a little bit more of the older age group of our faculty or our younger side, where we have just hired someone new or younger and that we don't have a dorm apartment yet for them, and they would be here for temporarily and then move into a dorm. So, they'd be on the younger side. That's how we intend this property to be used. And again, it's a very attractive property. We actually are looking forward to having a mix of not just all faculty in this property. But, but because of our housing needs and how this fluctuates year to year, it is hard for us to say, we only need five, we only need three. It's something, we want to have that flexibility, you know? Whether it's, we agreed to a cap, I mean, I think we are open to that. But, I just want to explain again how we intend to use our, how this property, housing in general, how the Academy uses it. So, we, so hopefully, that helps that. Steve, I don't know if you want to add something?
Well, I just, I, because I feel like almost the historian, and I know some of you know, but when I came in to have it converted, I actually had it approved for 17, up to 17 apartments. And in that, I also volunteered, there was no 55 and older category. It's not old-age housing, but I wanted working couples and people who, not a nursing home, okay? So, the project never, does no longer have any form of the nursing home, except it's huge, and that was the hardship then. And we've had, you know, we don't have a 1% vacancy. I wish we did, but the trouble is, people come and they leave, and we pay a month's rent as a commission to get a new person. It's empty for a few days, so I don't want to create the impression that it's 100% occupied. Secondarily, when you, when we volunteered the 55 and older, it was so that we could have the control that we have now over who moves there. You wouldn't have six kids living there because they said they didn't have any children, then they move in, and, and there's problems in the industry with that. And so, so when we proposed the 55 and older, during those times, there was a lot of pressure on the schools. So, they were resisting having family-sized projects at all because they yielded children and the, you know, the theory was then that, or the, I don't know, because I didn't do the math, you'd have a child and the, and the unit wouldn't pay enough taxes just even pay for their schooling, never mind plowing the snow. So, that, it wasn't to create this mix of old people. We had many 65 and older properties at that point, which are really, you know, age-restricted. They can not let anyone in who's under 65. So, and over the years, maybe 20% of our tenants have had children, but because they're 55 and older, maybe they were 16, maybe they were 17. And we didn't embrace it, you know, because of the powers of that. And I see the Academy having control over that. And also, as I said earlier, this really does preserve rental housing, even though their use may go up or down. Everyone will tell you, see, everything's getting converted from, you know, for a big house turned into four units, et cetera. We are going to have in our project at Woolworths, as I just mentioned, another five or six market units down there. So, those markets can take care of themselves, but the, and I just wanted to tell you why the 55 and older. We volunteered it. Nobody said you have to do this. It was voluntary and cooperative with the board. So, that's the old story.
I am concerned about losing apartments to the over 55 people. I believe this property was the Eventide Home.
Correct.
And it was for elderly ladies.
Correct.
And I have not had a chance to look at the minutes of the meeting that gave the variance, but I got the idea, rightly or wrongly, that it was, that it was in the spirit of the Eventide charge to at least try to provide something for people over 55. I'm very concerned that people are trying to move into Exeter. I think, I think you could really up the rent, and people would pay it. I think there are people who want to move into Exeter and can't find the housing. And by, by this, by this application, I see eventually the, be basically housing for the Academy. And again, people will lose the opportunity to move into Exeter. I am not a real estate person. I have no basis for my feeling, but I just have the idea that, that people over 55 who have means are looking for places, that's a, places to work in Exeter. That location is superb. It's within walking distance of downtown. It's a lovely set of buildings. You, from, I've not been in them, but your description is that you've kept it up wonderfully. I just think you could up the rent and you could, and you wouldn't, I, I just am concerned about losing the, these, I'm just upset, concerned about losing housing for over 55 here in Exeter.
You know, I, I wasn't here in 2011 either, so I want to be careful. But, my takeaway from when, when I read the minutes was that the board really approached Mr. Wilson and said, would you consider the 55 restriction? You were not planning necessarily a 55-plus project when you first took this lecture.
No, I actually.
Yeah.
Can you, if you're going to speak, can you?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just so we have a record.
At the time, we were working on different uses for the building. We proposed a small medical office building, and that was denied because it was not compatible with the neighborhood. I, I, I would just say that it wasn't something, if I had said, well, I don't want to make it 55 and older, or didn't suggest it, I'm not sure they would have held me. You know, they would have said, well, that's a good idea. And I hear you collaborating on what might be fair in this instance. And that's sort of the way that the discussion was. It was, you know, we were, the city, the place had been closed for 10 years. It was a wreck, abandoned. And the new nursing home profile was 60 rooms instead of 20. And actually, the property began with the owner's daughter was unmarried. So, when they passed away in the 40s, in those days, you didn't live alone if you were a single woman. So, so other friends of hers came in and they all lived there, and then it was converted to a nursing home in the 1960s. In the time since then, and even at that time, there was a lot of nursing care, and now there's a lot of assisted living. So, they've cut into this 55 and older market because that's, that's where people go to, you know, get a meal when they can't cook their own meals, et cetera. And I can tell you that I can't raise the rent for, you know, $400 per unit. The taxes are 40-something thousand dollars a year. So, just the fixed cost of, of keeping it as an apartment, and I respect that there's no rentals. And the reason there isn't because the financing and the cost of running them makes everybody condo their apartments. And I think what you're talking about and the fear that you have is exactly reversed by this arrangement. And because they will remain rental apartments, and the Academy has lower costs of operating them, and they can maintain the standard. I can't maintain the standard that we've maintained there and raise the rent high enough. It's not just taxes, it's not just financing. And I will, you know, file, I had planned on selling it as condominiums, and I'll have to execute that program, and I, and these people are on fixed income, so I just.
Can I just?
Yeah, go ahead.
I don't understand why you don't feel you can raise the rent. Is it because your existing tenants couldn't pay an increased rent, or because you have some other restriction that won't allow you to raise the rent?
No, it's just the market for rent. I can, if I, if I raise my rent significantly, even raising it a couple of points, a half of the people would shrug because they didn't get a cost of living increase. The other half who work, who don't really need this housing, frankly, they can pay pretty much, they have to pay whatever you ask them to pay. You know, the 55 to 60-year-olds, for instance, or the 55-year-old guy who's got a 50-year-old wife. So, I think this is a way to preserve housing stock as rentals, and I think there are plenty of condominiums for sale in town that doesn't need to be more. And it's a, it's a six of one, half a dozen of the other. For me, I just can't sustain the property the way that it is. And I just want to be definitive about that. And I think whether you call it a hardship on the property or a hardship on something else, my fixed costs are in the high teens.
Yeah, I'm sure your costs are going up. I guess I just don't, still don't understand why you can't raise the rent. Is it?
Because I'll have a vacancy of 20 or 25% at that point.
Even with this.
Because I can't accept people under 55. I think that's the answer to the question.
Do you have a waiting list right now for your apartments?
No.
Do you have any vacancies?
Three, coming up. Three that aren't going to renew. A lot of, probably six or eight of the people renew every year, so, so the only way they move is by aging out. Probably a third of the people are looking to buy houses. They sold a house, you know, and, and now they're looking to buy another house that they haven't been able to find. I think that's a strong profile for us. And they stick around a year or one and a half years or something. So, without those people, I would have a lot of vacancies. So, I believe.
Because you're saying that there's not enough 55 and older people that are seeking rental housing that could afford to pay the increased rent?
Well, I think, you know, in the younger, it's hard to generalize like that, and I want to give you a straight answer.
I'm just trying to understand, because it's not consistent is what I know.
First of all, there's six or eight people in the project that if I said to them, your rent's going to go up $300 a month, and I told them plenty of time before their leases come up, they would not be able to stay. Because their, their revenue has not gone up that quickly.
I see.
So, I believe that the Academy will keep the costs down, therefore, be able to offer the rental housing to that market. Then, there's always three units that are not, don't meet the age criteria, they just meet the profile. So, it's a couple or a single working person. We've had a number of Academy staff live there over the years who worked at the Academy. And so, you know, that's, that's why I think that this would, for the long term, preserve that rental housing to, to your, to your point, which I think is well-made.
At the Academy's discretion, they could choose not to raise the rent as well or condo it, or whatever they want to do with it.
I'm just, it's a theory of mine, and I think it's, it's based on facts. I haven't heard them say in any of our discussions that they have a plan that would use all of these apartments, and.
Can you, excuse me? Can you tell me, do the units all rent for the same amount?
No, there's a range of rents. Because they're all different sizes, like there's some one-bedroom, one-bath, there's some two-bedroom, one-bath, and there's more, and then there's some two-bedroom, two-baths like that. So, and they vary in sizes from 700 or so square feet up to 1,300 or so square feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a wide range, yeah.
So, there's a pretty, pretty wide range in, what?
Yeah, I would say between the high and low rents is probably $500, maybe, at least 500, maybe even, it's probably no more than 600 on average, between the lowest price and the highest price unit.
Okay.
So, just a couple of follow-ups from my client's perspective. You know, one of the reasons, I think, from my client's perspective, they would never condominiumize this project because if they're going to have their faculty in the building, they want to have some control over who else is in the building. And obviously, if units can now be sold from person A to person B to person C, they lose that.
Totally.
So, you know, that, that would not be something that would appeal to the Academy in any sense. You know, I, I think, in talking to Mark a little bit, you know, maybe a restriction for, we would agree to not use more than half, let's see, we have 14, so, to not use more than half of the units for faculty housing, and we would agree not to, for the first, we would agree not to use more than half the units, we would agree not to seek to remove or change that restriction for five years. So, after five years, we could come back and we could ask, and this board can do whatever it sees fit to do, but we have the right to ask. But, that would at least provide half the units in the 55-plus apartment, which, you know, is more you're going to get than if, if the condominium plan goes through. And I do think that this assures that that doesn't happen because the Academy wants to have control over who's in that building and not have units being flipped to people who aren't going to mix well.
Okay.
So.
I guess there's the theory that you won't raise rent. Has there been any thought to that? Is it something it might go with, or is it going to?
You know, I don't.
I know you can't tell me financial, but.
The Academy is not acquiring this property with the goal of being a landlord and maximizing its income. It really is acquiring this property for faculty housing purposes. And again, part of what I think appeals to the Academy is it, you know, provides a level of housing that it doesn't need right now, but may need in the future. I don't think there's any intent to go in and jack up rents. I do think, I think Steve is right in a certain sense, that, that the Academy is immune from some of the market pressures that a smaller property owner is because they have their own maintenance staff and, 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 you know, and they're not borrowing money at bank rates and things like that. So, I think it's logical to assume their rents aren't going up. And again, that's not the purpose of acquiring this property. You know, I said early on that we think we can meet the faculty housing needs through attrition of the normal tenants there, based on what Steve has told us about who renews and who doesn't. So, we're not looking to come in and jack up the rent. So, we're not looking to come in and serve eviction notices on people. We want to have a nice, Steve has a very, I think, successful community there. We want to continue it. We want our faculty to be in a place that they're comfortable and happy with, and having good tenants who have been there for a long time, who are happy, is probably more important than getting every last dime. than getting every last dime out of the rental market.
Okay. Do we have anything else? Is there anybody from the public who'd like to speak?
Hi, my name is Taryn Allen and I live at 92 High Street, um, for the last 28 years almost. So I do remember when it was Eventide and it was, um, it did have a wonderful spirit. And I wanted to say publicly to Steve, we've never met, even though we're technically neighbors. But you did do an amazing job with that property because.
I thought you got a big.
It could have gone many different directions, but the property, it is beautiful and it was beautifully restored. But there's some things that make it part of our neighborhood and that's the people who live there. Um, I've gotten to know some of the people who live there just because maybe they have a dog and they walk around my house, you know, um, every day. I know people who work at the hospital. Um, so it's a great location for the people who work at the hospital. Um, some people maybe volunteer or I know somebody's a hostess at a restaurant. So my problem isn't with the age restriction. I don't know honestly how I feel about that. Um, should it be lifted so that it's feasible? Perhaps. That seems fine. Our, our neighborhood has a lot of chit chat about this just because the applications seem very ambiguous about what was going to happen to the property. Uh, so I would just say we're concerned how it betters the community as a whole. We don't quite understand why PA wants to acquire it right now, especially if they don't really need it. And especially since we've seen the area around High Street grocery leveled and we know that's going to be faculty housing. So it just seemed odd that why at this point did they really want to acquire it if they didn't really need it? And then what's going to happen to it in the future? Because it does feel like there's, you know, just some things that are intangible that do affect all of us in the neighborhood. And if it's kind of a transient community, that affects us all. So I don't know how I feel about it honestly, except that I do agree with you Laura, the points that you made. It's a hot rental market to say, oh, I can't rent it. I don't know. I have friends who've had a really hard time finding rentals. Um, but I also empathize with Steve because I have really high water bills too. I can't even imagine what a multi-unit water bill looks like. So please just take into consideration not just how it affects PA, but how it affects the whole community. Because I think that's something that also, um, you know, should be considered when you grant a variance. So, thank you.
Any other public comment? Would you like to reply?
Again, I've said it a couple of times, I'm not going to beat it up, but you know, the intent here is to fill this place and bring faculty people in through normal attrition. We're not coming in with eviction notices. We're not going to jack up the rents. In, in many ways, from what I've heard from Steve and, and some of you folks, I, I mean, this may be the best opportunity to keep this project as close to way, to the way it is now moving forward than what happens if this variance is denied. Cause whether it's someone else increasing the rents to market levels or condominiumizing, you know, that's going to change part of what's been here historically. I think this gives an opportunity, I mean, the question is why now? It's an opportunity for the Academy to get a property to address a current need and to be prepared going into the future. Uh, and we're willing to give you a restriction so that it continues to be, um, apartments for at least half the building. We may come back in the future and ask to have it lifted after five years. Um, but you know, the intent is that this building will continue much in the way that it has, uh, simply by, and the only change is adding a little different tenant mix to what's there currently.
Do we have any more questions before I, is it a closed public session? And we're going to discuss, I think. I think we will. I understand why the Academy wants it. It's close to their campus. It makes a lot of sense for them, that part of it. And, and they're good stewards of the property they own. But my concern is losing, um, market rate apartments at a time when they're very desperately needed. And I'm, I'm not really hung up on the 55-plus. I just don't like taking, um, you know, the, taking market rate units off that are available to the general public off the market and restricting them to faculty use.
I think either way we're going to, because if not, he's mentioned he's probably just going to condo them. So now they are all, there is no rentals left in there.
Well, that's one thing that might happen. I, um, and, and it is a trend, so I'm not saying it won't happen, but, um, rent, there has been upward pressure on the rents all over the country and state for a long time. And, um, I can imagine that it would be hard for some of his tenants to remain if rents were raised, but that's certainly an option for somebody who own this building is to raise rents to the current market level, um, to cover the expenses, which I'm sure have gone up. And, um, I, so, but my bigger concern is on the hardship part of it. So in item five in the variance criteria, um, 5A, it says, um, there is no fair and substantial relationship between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property. It really doesn't have to do with the, the potential buyer. It has to do with the property. Um, and I do grant that the proposed use as faculty housing would be a reasonable use, but the, um, the hardship was addressed 10 years ago when the variance was granted before. So to me, the, the fact that it's not suitable for, the built, existing building's not suitable for a single family home has already been addressed and it's really not relevant anymore. So is there a hardship at this point?
There's no apparent new hardship.
Well, is, is the likelihood that it may not be able to be maintained as a rental property something to consider? Because I think that's part of what I heard. It's not feasible.
And I hear that too.
To be in it as rented units.
So we, my understanding of our role is to do with use, not so much ownership.
Mm-hmm. But I think we're guard, yeah.
So.
Well, I guess it could be used.
It's kind of, I mean, use is kind of mixed up and ownership is kind of mixed up in this whole thing.
Right.
So it's, you know, me saying that has, it goes both ways. So, um, so I don't think we can control whether it becomes a condominium or a rental unit. I mean, we've had many, many, many applications that have come in and said, use the word multifamily housing, which can apply to rental or condominium.
Right.
Ownership housing. And, you know, they present it as if it's going to be apartments, but they never commit to that and then it's always condos. So, um, you know, that's beyond our control. Adding housing units is a net good to the community right now because there's such need, but, um, we have these existing units and, you know, I'm kind of on the fence about whether, um, there's a hardship to change the variance that was granted 10 years ago. Is there a new hardship? So.
Where I'm struggling is that, um, when we, when we have a variance, uh, we normally have a pretty clear idea of what that's going to mean in terms of the use of the property. And what we're hearing here is, it's pretty vague. And even, even if you, is it going to, is it going to be half and half? Is it going to be two-thirds, one-third, one-third, two-thirds? Are there going to be couples with a kid or two thrown in?
Well, they would like the flexibility, but they're willing to live with the 50% unit mix of faculty and, and market rate housing, 55-plus housing.
Yeah.
So that's what I would, I mean, if we're going to go for this, that's what I would be willing to go for is if, with that restriction of 50, 50% faculty housing maximum.
Part of, excuse me, part of the problem is that there's a fairly dramatic difference in the size of the different units. Some are quite small and some are really pretty impressive. So there's no, there's no easy way to say, uh, the left-hand side of the building is all going to be.
I don't think that would be the plan. It'd be 50% of the building, not physically 50%, but half of the units.
Right. But, but that's not half of the space by any stretch of.
True. I don't think we can control it.
I know we can't. That's, that's what I'm saying. It's just.
But at the same time, if you went right there and only the small ones are options, that's what you have to rent from because faculty are in the bigger ones. It is what it is. Then if you don't want the small unit, you don't rent the small unit. You rent somewhere else. So I don't think it has that big of an impact.
I don't know.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. Um, we have a, an, you know, a butter eye?
Almost.
Almost. Would like to speak. Unfortunately, I didn't realize this, but the door was locked.
Oh, it was locked out during public session?
See, he was locked out during public session, so.
So you want the rookie to reopen public session?
That's up to you, Madam Chair, Chairboard.
Because he came all the way down here and we can see not many people participate. So I'll encourage participation, even if the door's locked.
Thank you.
Sorry about the door though.
No, that's fine. Um, my name's Richard Harmon. I'm almost in the butter, just a little farther up. And I literally did not know about.
What is your address? I'm sorry.
Oh, 95 High Street. And I literally did not know about this. These things always seem to happen in August when nobody's paying attention. Um, but, and I apologize because I don't really know what else has been said, but from what I have seen on just the notice that was sent to me, um, I have a couple of concerns. Um, for one, going back to, I think there's been a few iterations of this property and it was my understanding that the original endowment was for elderly housing. And we've kind of deviated through a series of bobs and weaves in this now to get where we even are today with, um, the property use. And, um, it clearly is a far more intensive use now than I think what it originally was endowed for. I thought that that endowment had deed restrictions on it as well. Um, I don't know that those were, um, maybe carefully reviewed the last time that there was a zoning approval here, but I think that, and I was always under the impression, I've lived in Exeter for 64 years, um, that there was something that ran with the deed, um, for that property and how it was supposed to be used. So I would hope that that would be checked. Maybe somebody has already addressed that today. I don't know. Um, another thing that I have seen recently with the Academy is that something starts off one way and then morphs into quite a bit higher density. Um, we're already seeing the effects of that with whatever it is, 13 or 14 new houses, um, up on High Street at the intersection. And so it, it seems that things get pushed to the limit. And I would hope that if something on this nature got approved, that it would limit further expansion. It probably would be limited anyway because it's all wetlands behind the place, but I don't know if that was addressed before tonight or it wasn't. But this, this is the misconception always on High Street that it's just another way to get into town. And, and that's true, but it's a residential neighborhood and it's a single-family residential neighborhood for people that, like myself, for 20 years have fought fairly hard to try to preserve because the two other ways into town are already commercial entities. And I think were it not for what efforts we have put in before, you'd see a much different character on that street. But, you know, things happen incrementally in this town and, and there's a lot changing in this town now and I understand it's growth and it's whatever. But, um, here again, I think that this clearly violates what the intent of the original, um, property and the endowment for it was for. I think the use that it is now is stretching it a little bit, but it's, I think they've been good neighbors. It's been fine and it at least to some degree serves the intent of, um, of the original home and what the purpose of it was. Faculty housing and where that may go in the future, that, that really deviates from what the clear intent of that original endowment for that Eventide home was.
What was this original endowment? I actually appraised this property before it changed use and I don't recall any deed restriction.
Well, it was a home for the elderly.
Right. But was it, there some?
I believe there was.
You donated the property with restrictions or something?
I believe that it was. I, 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 that has been my understanding for 64 years and there was an endowment by someone for the property. I thought, um, that it would be a home to take care of the elderly. And it, it was specifically operated in that manner for, I don't know what, 30, 40 years? I don't know what it was, um, or whatever until it ended. But I, this is not what was intended for that property when it was originally.
When I did the appraisal, I did a very thorough highest and best use analysis of all the things that could go there and I was unaware of any deed restriction. Not to say I couldn't have missed something, but maybe Mr. Wilson.
And I, I literally saw this and I came down here, so I don't have anything for you.
Okay.
Other than 64 years of valuable experience in the town of Exeter.
No, I'm curious about it. I'm not suggesting.
No, I know. And, and I'm not purporting to know exactly, but this is a real deviation from what the original Eventide home was intended to be.
And that was no longer a viable model. I mean.
I know, but just because something from a business standpoint economically isn't a viable model does not necessarily mean that a zoning board should overturn it, I don't think. You know, just because something from a business standpoint doesn't make sense, doesn't negate what, um, zoning regulations and town zoning ordinances, um, approved and allow. That's my feeling. Just me. So I'm happy I was able to get in.
Thank you.
That's all I wanted to say.
For answering my question.
But, so it was that. And then restrictions on any further development there are my concerns. Thank you very much.
Sorry. Um, we're not aware of any deed restrictions. I, I haven't run the title, um, but even if there is something out there, that's not a matter for this board. That's obviously a matter between whoever has the right to enforce it and whoever owns the property. So I would urge the board not to factor that suggestion into your deliberations. Um, you know, in terms of, as I told you before, there's no proposal to expand this building. We're not looking to do anything new. There's no physical changes to the property. We're just seeking to change the tenant mix. I don't think the board can tell me I can never come back and propose something new. I know the property well enough to know whether that would ever be something that some owner would want to do. But again, I don't think the board can prevent future applications. I would imagine that would be a tough road if I'm standing here someday with a future application on this property.
And mine's owning still single family.
Understood, understood. But again, you know, I, I don't think you can preclude that in granting this request. And again, there's no request from us to do anything different with the property other than to change the tenant mix.
Did you have something to say about the deed, any potential deed restriction?
I just wanted to say that there were, that there's no deed restriction and, um, and I know that for a fact because we ran the title. I actually have all that research in my briefcase, but I, it was not subject to that. What did happen was there was a foundation that was formed. So when they sold the property, the money went to the foundation and the foundation paid that money to a, a cause for, for elderly causes. So it wasn't like the property was the foundation. It was a foundation that provided money to operate it when it was losing money. And it was closed for more than, uh, more than 10 years. I couldn't guess exactly, but it could have even been 12 or 15 years and it had become dilapidated. And it was approved for 17 units, which I ne, I never, I could have added more and more, but you know, it's, it's in balance right now. We use the footprints of the structures that were there and all we did was add garages. So I just say that I'm sure that there's no deed restriction, uh, on the property. So respectfully.
Thank you. I would have reclosed public session and we can further discuss.
I think we should lock it this time.
Lock the door? Lock the door?
Lock the door.
Well, I guess I have worries about losing the rentals, but I also know the Academy needs housing, so they're just renting other things in town. So, in reality, we're splitting the diff-, it's either we're losing so many units in one building or that many buildings elsewhere in town. So, I don't think it, it stinks if not for the public, but it is, it's gonna happen either way. I'd rather keep all the Academy people together, not that they're bad people, but just, I think it's better for the community too, and versus having all the random apartments in town and being filled up by Academy people versus other people that live here.
Academy people who rent units and live in town are members of the town, so it's...
People at the Academy themselves are renting units to put faculty into.
Excuse me?
The Academy itself is making, getting rentals out. So, yeah, it's either way, it's...
Right, right.
And they're a big part of the community.
Right.
Faculty own homes.
Right.
They're a part of the community. And like you said, they're going there after dorm lights. They've been with the Academy ten to fifteen years. They're not, so they're probably not gonna bail after a year and be a significant transient issue over there.
Right.
They might go buy their own home, but...
In that way, it's not, I mean, not that significant. Really, these people will become members of the community, like the current tenants. But, one question, and I know we were just discussing this, the hardship issue. Do we have a handle on what the hardship actually is?
We don't have one.
That's what it... I'm struggling with it. Because the original hardship was that it couldn't be used as a single-family home, right? So, it was, variance was granted with this condition, fifty-five plus. So, now the request is to remove the fifty-five plus. So, what's, would be the hardship?
Are we removing the fifty-five plus, or are we just editing it?
No, we'd be adding fifty-five plus and faculty.
Yeah, and, yeah, so it's...
That's what my understanding of the request was.
Yeah, okay. And the, and like they said, twenty-five percent of it has to be, there's no age restriction, twenty-five percent of it. So, could the Academy, in theory, put older professors who are downsized in there, and twenty-five percent of the building can be people under fifty-five?
I'm sorry, we're just the twenty-five percent.
Somebody mentioned that fifty-five and under, so you're not age, you can't, it's not one hundred percent fifty-five.
Not considered discrimination that way.
Yeah, twenty-five percent of it, I believe, was mentioned. That has to be, doesn't have to be fifty-five. So, they could put three first-year professors in there, if nobody else in the building is fifty-five.
I've never heard that twenty-five percent, not fifty-five and older, are in my...
In your dealings?
Yeah. Well, like the A T D said, that, you know, three of them...
Yeah, because it could be age units or not age-restricted. I don't know what the underlying...
Well, I don't know what the enforcement mechanism is for the fifty-five and older, but I, I just, I don't know if there's like a twenty-five percent.
Yeah, there was some, some percentage of it needs to be, doesn't have to be fifty-five plus, because then it's age discrimination.
So, let me throw in, and I'm uncomfortable with the whole concept. It's too vague, and we don't have any clear sense for where it's going. So, if, if you put a restriction, it's very difficult to see how that restriction will play out with the nature of the structure. In other words, that you could, from a practical standpoint, you could, you said half the units are not restricted. In terms of the value of those units, you could have three-quarters of the value of the place unrestricted.
Yes.
And it's, and so there's, it's, it's too loose, and, and I think when you couple that with there's no hardship...
I don't know how we could make it any tighter than that. I don't think we're...
I think, yeah, you gotta look like...
There's no mechanism for us to, you know, we just don't have that, that...
It'd be fifty percent of units is probably the best we could do.
Yeah, and it's not unrestricted. It's just available to faculty, which...
Well, the faculty could go there today if they're fifty-five or older.
Yes, they could.
They could.
And if that's the... They gotta have some old guys over there. Just think of all the knowledge we have.
Well, if they get to that age, they'd probably buy a house at this point. They've been here for forty years.
Yeah.
Thirty years. If they're really young, the rest are starting.
So, I'm, I'm a no. Even with the limitation on the number, I would, I would, if somebody wanted to just say, "Accept this and move to accept it," and somebody else wanted to put a limitation on, I'd vote in favor of the limitation in fear that not enough people would agree with me. But, I, I don't think, I don't think it's an acceptable proposition, again, because it's too vague in how it's gonna impact the property, and there's no hardship.
Does anybody else have different thoughts on the hardship question?
I agree with Rick. I'm, I don't see what the hardship is.
I mean, I originally, my thought, and perhaps that's not correct, is that, but I don't think it was, I don't know if it was articulated this way, that it's, it cannot be, it's not feasible to maintain it as it is now as rental housing. It's going to be converted, but that's still...
I think, I think it is feasible. I think it's not feasible to maintain the, the existing level of rents.
Right.
Or the, half the current tenants.
And that may affect the tenants anyway, which would, you know, we have heard from the neighborhood would bother people. But, I don't know if we can control that.
Right.
But, we, I do think, I think it's inconceivable in the current market that there's, that there's, it's, they can't remain rental, market rental housing. There's enormous, enormous demand, so...
But, I think what we're hearing is that it won't remain rental housing.
That's what I'm feeling, because it doesn't sound like it's going to stay rental.
It might, it might be a consideration for us. I, I don't.
Well, it's not something we can control.
No.
I mean, it is, it's certainly relevant consideration. I don't think it's wrong to consider it. I don't see how we can control any of that, so...
Well, the Academy likely won't turn it into condos.
That's true.
And that's what's pushing me slightly the opposite way of the gentleman to my right?
Yeah.
Is with the fear of it just becoming more condos. I would rather see seven units available for anybody to rent, preferably at the current rental rates.
Yeah.
Then it's condos, and now they're all selling for fifty, five-hundred, fifty thousand dollars, and now nobody who lives there can afford that with their interest rates, and then we have a lot more condos on the market than we...
Well, they'll sell for whatever the market can bear, given the interest rates at the time that they're marketed, so...
What happens when you condo a fifty-five, uh, limit structure? Does this let it go away?
Does the...
Age restriction?
No, I wouldn't think so. There's plenty of fifty-five-plus condo developments. I think the restriction, the, the variance that we granted ten years, or whoever was on the board ten years ago, granted runs with the land. So, that, that's why I'm saying the hardship that was true by this, you know, existing structure that couldn't be used in any practical way as a single-family home, that hardship was cured by that variance relief. So, that's why I don't see a new hardship. But, the restriction, I do believe, would, you know, run with the land, not with the ownership. Condominium is still multifamily housing, it's just different ownership. And Academy is still multifamily housing, it's just different ownership. So, you know, it's, both is true.
Yeah. The other, the other concern that's in the back of my mind, since I'm the wacko, um, internet bed and breakfast guy...
And we'll talk about that later, so let's talk about that.
No, 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 no. But, if it's condo, if it's condoed, people can buy a condo or two in there and rent them out.
Depending on... That's scary. No, you're not wrong. I'm just saying, that's, that's kinda scary.
Well, this is a bit the other...
Okay. Let's worry about that one after we've finished this, with this case. Does anyone...
I think this one, we need to go through the variance criteria a little.
Well, yeah.
I've spoken a lot. Do you want me to speak more, or stop talking? Do you wanna do it?
Welcome back.
Well, you need, you need somebody who thinks it should pass to go through it, because if you, if we all think it shouldn't pass, then we ought to do that rather than the other way around.
Well, we still, we still need to go through it. So, if we do say no, we have outlined why, clearly.
You're right.
Okay. Okay. "The variance is not contrary to the public interest in the spirit of the ordinance is observed, generally considered together. The proposed use must not conflict with the explicit or implicit purpose of the ordinance and must not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, threaten public health, safety, or welfare, or otherwise injure public rights." Okay, I, I don't think it, it doesn't seem like it alters the essential character of the neighborhood to change. Well, it does remove the fifty-five plus.
People say that they're worried it will. It's kind of a fine line there.
Okay. Well, how does it affect the essential character? Because it's...
Extension of the academy into a single-family neighborhood.
Okay. Okay. As far as threatening public health, safety, or welfare, or otherwise injuring public rights, I don't think those are implicated here. Okay. Anyone else have any thoughts on that first one? Okay. "Substantial justice is done. The benefit to the applicant should not be outweighed by harm to the general public or to other individuals." Okay, so the benefit to the applicant is another source of housing for their faculty. Harm to the general public is a loss of rental units and a loss of fifty-five-plus available rental units.
And the applicant has other properties that they could use.
True. Okay, so that's...
How do we know they have other properties available? If they had other properties available to house faculty, they would use them. I think they need more is the problem.
Well, but they're building a whole bunch of new stuff now.
Yeah, I mean, they haven't said we have people here when we have literally no place to...
Also mentioned they're renting other additional units to house people.
Right.
So, they clearly have a shortage, they're renting out other homes and not keeping them on Academy property.
Right.
So, I think they do have, I don't think they have...
They definitely have a short-term housing shortage. They also have a very large proportion of the real estate.
In town, yes.
And the means to create solutions elsewhere, probably, but it may conflict with some of their other plans. I'm not saying that they have infinite resources, but they do have a lot of options.
Okay. Okay. So, the next one, "The values of surrounding properties are not diminished." We haven't heard any evidence on that, so, and that's...
And I'd be willing to weigh in as a valuation person to say that that's unlikely to have any, any impact on property values. Very unlikely.
"Literal enforcement of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship." Okay, unnecessary hardship means, because of special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, there is no fair and substantial relationship between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property, and the proposed use is a reasonable one." Okay. So, there is no fair and substantial, special conditions. Okay, we know that the property is unique, right? It's a large building, a lot of units, it's a historic building. Okay, we've gone through that. But, is there a fair and substantial relationship between the general public purposes of the ordinance and its application to that property? Okay. We're now talking about the fifty-five-plus restriction, really, correct? I mean, that's what it is. Okay. That was put in to allow, to preserve rental units for that particular age group in the community. Okay, and we would be losing some of those.
And quite frankly, in terms of what they propose, the only hardship is the age restriction.
They're saying that the age restriction is the hardship.
Yeah, from their, from their perspective.
From their perspective.
But, I don't, I don't think that works for us, but...
Is it a hardship for the property?
It's not a hardship for the property.
Well, it's being used right now. It's being rented. It's not a hard, I mean, it's being, it, it, the restriction is there, and the property is being used successfully, right?
I think that the current owner is saying that there's some economic hardship, but,
I'm having a problem with the economic hardship.
As I have. I, I, just because the demand is so high. I know that the existing tenants might have a hardship with market rents, but, um, there's definitely a market for rental units, fifty-five plus.
Is there a large market for fifty-five-plus rental units?
I think there's a large market for all...
All rental. I know all rentals, I'm just wondering...
I think what they're saying, yeah, what was presented was that the rent would have to be increased so much that...
I mean, there's constantly reading articles about how people in my general age category aren't selling their, their large homes and downsizing because there aren't enough...
There's no place to go.
Housing options. There's not, smaller homes are very hard to come by, and there's not enough rental units, and things like that. So, I, I, I don't, I'm not saying he's not telling the truth, I'm sure that's his experience, but I have a hard time understanding where the scarcity of applicants for really attractive rental housing in a nice neighborhood, is where that comes from.
And, and we may not want to consider a condo as a good thing, but it's something that can be done without any need to come to see us.
And the fifty, right, yes. And you've now lost all your rental units.
With the money that seems to be out there, I could see someone just buying the property.
Well, that would be not necessarily a great thing, but...
And using it as a single-family home or making two homes there.
Well, that would require a lot of, yeah.
Well, but you'd be surprised the amount of money that's out there that I have seen.
We, we wouldn't have any control over that, Martha.
I know.
Well, we could. Anything other than a single-family home, I guess, if someone, we, we would require variance.
Yeah.
But, if someone wanted to turn it into a single-family home, we have no, we have no control over that.
Okay. And the proposed use is a reasonable one. Okay. Proposed use here is to rent to provide housing for faculty. That's not unreasonable.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
So, okay, well, then, there's an alternative undue hardship.
Okay.
Unnecessary hardship means that owing to special conditions of the property, we know what those are, the property cannot be reasonably used in strict performance with the ordinance. Okay, well, actually, that, I mean, it is being used, but we're being told, or was suggested that it could change, the use could change. Actually, if it were converted to condos, that could be done without any further variance request. It would just be fifty-five plus. So, we're having a hard time pinning down the unnecessary hardships, I think. And some of the others we will kind of maybe on. The first three.
Yeah. I mean, I think we've discussed all of this, I don't know.
Yeah.
If there's any new points to be made.
Does somebody want to make a motion and then we can discuss off that?
Well, let me, let me throw it. I, I don't know how in this process you can make me happy about the vagueness of what's been asked. It's so loose. We don't know any kind of restrictions we add, we don't know how they're going to be applied, we don't know what, what the future's going to bring five years down the road, and it's just messy. So, which one of the five items do you get to too vague to be worthwhile?
I don't think it's any more vague than any application in terms of our ability to control the exact nature of everything. So, I don't really agree with you on that.
Okay.
I'm not sure what's, I'm not trying to be difficult, but I just don't know how to help you.
Well, there's a lot of people who say I'm beyond help. Okay.
I mean, I think 50, if we were to vote on a proposal that restricted 50% of the units to faculty at a maximum, then that's about as specific as we could get, and it's about as specific as we ever get with any of these, so...
Okay.
I know what you're saying, and you're not wrong, it's just that's sort of too granular for us to be able to control that, and I don't know that we should be able to control it.
I would be happier if I had a real estate market assessment of the building, what the, what the current rates are for rentals. I have this vague notion that there are, that there is a demand for higher, for apartments, but is there? I have no concrete facts, and so I, I would love to have a real estate person come in and say, well, now, the rents could be, or, or we have a demand.
Well, for instance, I can't quote you exact figures, but New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority publishes an annual assessment of the rental market in the entire state, and they talk about vacancy rates and average rents and so forth, and I recently heard their, a synopsis of their, their recent report, and vacancies very low, rents are very high compared to the recent past, and, you know, I, I want to say the vacancy rate was average throughout the state was close between 1 and 3%, which 5% is considered healthy, it's enough that people can move and out of one place and find another place, and so under 5% is, is very, very tight, and it's been that way for a while. So, if you're willing to accept my market knowledge, that's, that's what I know.
Well, I guess I'm asking, would like, you know, a local realtor or somebody who would look at that particular parcel. And we've also heard about restrictions on the land, I, I think that should just be double-checked to make sure there aren't, there isn't any, aren't any, and also, I would like to see the minutes of the meeting that gave the variance, what the discussion was.
So, whatever decision we make, it would not negate any deed restrictions, so if there were some deed restrictions, they would still be valid regardless of what we do. We're a separate layer of control on a property, so that whoever had, you know, a right to enforce that could, could enforce the deed restriction by, by legal means.
So, if we were to grant this and the sale went through and then it was about to go through and it was discovered that there were a deed restriction, then the parties would have to deal with that and probably the sale would not go through if that were enforced. It's just, it's, it's, it's the next step. It could invalidate the whole thing, but we still need to decide whether to grant the variance to allow them to proceed, really.
I guess what I was thinking of is maybe, what's the word? Not postponing, what's the word I want?
Continuing?
Continuing this until next month when they can come back with more specifics. The applicant.
I think one of the advocates wants to add something if we want to, I don't know if you want to reopen.
Yeah, we're in deliberation.
Yeah, we're in deliberation.
I don't know that we can open it back up.
Okay, okay, I'm just, I just noticed that he was...
Perfect task.
It rules, but I...
Yeah, I'm like, I'm pretty sure we...
So, let's go ahead and make a motion with the 50% restriction and see what happens. I'm not going to make that motion.
If, if the board thinks it would be helpful to continue this and have us come back next month and try to address some of these concerns, I'm happy to do that, so I just wanted to get that up there.
Martha, do you want to be more specific about what concerns you'd, you'd need addressed? I'm not sure it's going to help me.
Well, I would like, they talk about the deed restrictions, and I just would like that clarified. Also, the trust, the eventide, when it dissolved, were there any restrictions there?
I, I don't think this, those things matter in terms, if we say, yes, they can do it, and there's a deed saying they can't, they can't. So, even if we get that back...
And then I would like an analysis from, say, a local realtor as to the rates in the area and how viable the apartments are.
Well, I guess at the same time, too, he's able to raise the rent if he chooses. I don't think, if he feels, if he needs more money, he can raise the rent. I don't think we need a, I'm not sure, an analysis of the area, rent's high. It is, I'm worried about sending them off to do these things, I'm not sure it's going to, how much of an impact it's going to have on our decision, because we're not going to find out what he's charging for rent and what he should be charging for rent, that's not in our purview.
Well, if it's not, it's not.
Am I right with that? Or we don't, rents are, we can ask how it impacts neighbor properties, but...
Well, I think if one of the consideration, if, and I don't know if it is, but if one of the considerations is whether it's feasible to maintain the property as it is, and the response is, I'd have to raise when it's too high and, you know...
I think rents too high might be impacted by the residents who currently live there and have leases. If they're 85 years old, they don't have the means to pay $400 more, but the market could easily handle $400 more.
Although, like you said, if the alternative is condos, that can happen.
The fact that the people who are living there now can afford an increase isn't a reason to, we can't deal with their hardship. I'm not saying their hardship isn't real. The issue is...
It's just not before us.
The issue is, can you rent the place at a level that allows you to make a profit?
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Do we need, is that, I think that might be what Martha is saying.
Okay, but we really don't need that.
Yeah.
I don't want to speak, you, you can listen to me, but you can't even say, "That turkey is telling the not true." I think he wants to sell it because he's tired of it, and the easiest way for him to do that is to sell it in one lump, as Martha was suggesting, that maybe there's somebody else out there who wants to run it just the way he's running it, but he does have the option to condo it. It would be a lot more difficult to sell everything by condo than it would to sell it to the academy, but I, I don't think the fact that the rents are too high or would be too high for the current residents is really relevant, I think.
I don't think it's just for the current...
It's relevant to them, but not to our decision here.
I think what was...
Exactly, exactly.
What was suggested also, though, was that they would have to be so high to cover costs on the building that they would be unrentable. I think that's what was suggested.
I'm saying, I don't believe that.
Don't buy it.
I'm incredulous.
Okay. Sorry.
So, um, does someone want to make a motion?
I think we're there. Okay. We've kind of circled.
I am sympathetic to this application in a lot of ways, but I don't see a hardship, and I am moving to deny the application for, where's my paper go? I move to deny the application at one...
It's that one.
Yeah.
You don't have it on that sheet.
I'm doing it the wrong way. For Philip, for the variance, for Article 4, Section 4.2, permitted uses at 81 High Street, Case 22-14.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
My job.
I was being helpful.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I'm sorry.
This is a ready discussion.
Well, it's a motion to deny, it's a motion to deny, on what grounds do we want one to add to that?
So, if you're...
Specifically, the item five.
Yeah.
Lack of hardship.
Are we saying, what did we just say? Is it if you vote yes, that means it's declined?
If you agree with the motion, then the application will be denied.
Okay, so yes means no.
Yes.
Correct.
Well, I beg your pardon, an aye means no.
And I'll vote aye.
All in favor?
I vote aye.
Do that.
Yes.
Aye. I'm a no, so my apologies.
Thank you.
It still might be a good thing for the academy to go ahead and buy the property.
I have the 55 restriction.
Yeah.
That's all you need to do. Just leave it 55.
Next on the agenda, minutes from, I believe, May?
It would be old.
It's been a minute.
Two months ago, I read them and thought they were fine.
I read, oh, I wasn't here, so I was just... You get the not part of this part. I read them this afternoon, and I could find nothing because Our Lady is fantastic.
Yeah.
Nice to see you.
I did read them before, and I don't recall any corrections that were warranted either. Where did I put them?
Wait, madam.
So, I will make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there any other business, Laura?
Okay. Yes, there is other business. Mr. Baum could not be here tonight, but he asked me to let you know that he has been in discussion with the town planner, Dave Sharples, and, who has been in contact with the planning board about whether our concern about certain zoning changes and ordinances that we might like to express our concerns about, to the planning board and to have a meeting with them so they understand our concerns about the implications of certain things. So, is there anybody who's interested in attending the meeting regarding that?
If I can, as an alternate.
Of course you can.
I would like to go.
I would.
I would like to go.
Doug?
Lunch, you want to come?
Marcelo.
Want to come? I'd like to go with you there.
Are we going to the conference?
No, we're talking about, Kevin asked me to ask if anybody was interested in a meeting with the planning board or the planner about...
Yeah, I was there.
Would you like to attend, Doug?
Yeah, I'll be there.
Do you have to?
Whether you want to or not.
I was at the last meeting with Kevin and...
No, we're not off the air. This is, this is other business.
It wasn't, it was just a conference.
Nobody can hear you.
It was like a private...
So, if there's a bunch of us, then it would be a public meeting, so we would...
Yeah, well, I think that, yeah, I think that was the right choice, just adding a couple of numbers. Yeah, I think that's the best way to represent it. Everybody had to know both parties that we were just running and so on, so I think that was a good decision on Kevin's end. I can't, I can't, I can't remember the names.
So, we need to get Kevin the list of people from this board who would like to attend? Well, currently, we have three people interested.
What meeting, is this a specific meeting with a specific date?
It has something arranged, yes. Based on...
Okay, okay.
Availability?
Based on interest in availability.
Kevin needs to do that, the planning board will check their three.
Did you want to go?
I, I think that you guys will have it covered. I'm okay with, I would go if I was me, but I think you got it.
Yeah, I think with the three we have, we should be good.
Yeah.
I would definitely like to go.
Oh, you will be going. Don't you worry.
So, right now, that's all we, we want, is I'll let Kevin know, or someone will let Kevin know that several people are interested, and then when the meeting gets set up, you'll get notified.
They'll probably be due, probably October or somewhere around the summer.
Okay.
Okay, so that was my...
Do you want to email him, or do you want me to email him?
Do you want to do it?
No, we didn't.
They did, they did.
We were fast, we were fast.
You could have pulled me, right?
Is there any other business? Do I have motions to adjourn?
Yes.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we're done.
So, you guys had the summer off, so now it's back to work.
Yeah.
The card.